Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and start Policy Committee. We'll just go around and start with introductions.
I'm Lynn Passy, I'm the Assistant Superintendent.
And Maria Parker, I'm the Clerk for the Board.
Michelle Thompson.
Shannon Ryder, I'm a mom and I forget to make middle and high schools.
And I'm Joan Laquante.
I'm a high school.
I'm Lacey Jacklet, I have three kiddos in Lakeland and I work at Tommings.
I'm Nate Potter, I have four kids, but only one goes to Athol Menture.
I'm Kristi Ottley and I am the Treasurer for the PTU at John Brown.
Yeah, nice. And I do have a kid in the district too. I forgot that I'm a mom too. I did too.
I didn't even have, so I'm okay. Alright, so, we're starting off on Policy forty-two-ten, is that correct?
No, we are waiting on that, we're still waiting for, Jessica's still building that fee schedule up.
Oh, okay.
So, we, we're kind of at a standstill till we're at that point with those. So, we were gonna jump to forty-four-ten, which we already made a pretty good dent here, but then we wanted this language to be similar to the interview, the thirty-five forty-five, so
Right.
The last one, Maria was, you asked her to compare the two, like, the language, so it was one of the same and then add that in.
Right, which she did, yeah.
So, that's what we're at, so now it's just kind of finalizing that one and then we can move to the next one.
Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, 'cause we did go over this last week. The highlighted areas are parallel with what's in thirty-five forty-five. So, I think, and this is not something that was discussed with the Board last night, the thought was, do we, do we have to have the duplicative policies? When, I mean, the thirty-five forty-five is under students, this is under community relations, but they're both dealing with investigation and arrests.
And they're almost really similar.
They, yeah. They are.
There's just a lot more. I feel like we talked about that in February on that last one, we first brought this up, of like, there seems like a duplicate.
We did, and what I don't know is if, I mean, they're not like identical, identical, but they're very, they both target the same thing. So, we were going to ask the Board what they wanted to do, and that conversation didn't happen.
Okay, so thirty-five forty-five was tabled last night, and
It was tabled for review with
The administrators.
Administrators, and then coming back to put legal language in it, or see what legal's recommendation was, and then revise the language.
Right, because remember, Megan put all those comments in. And so, we did go over it with administrators, they had very specific to thirty-five forty-five, they had a few comment, I mean, it was pretty minor changes.
Okay.
So, we technically could take it back to the Board meeting and just look at side by side, or how do you wanna do that? I mean, there wasn't, the administrators didn't have, there was like
A shout to obey.
Yeah, a shout, essentially, yeah.
Make it optional, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, as far as what do you wanna do, if you wanna bring all of that back to policy and then look at merging the two?
Well, thirty-five forty-five needed to come back, once it did that, so I don't know if it's on the list or not.
I can add what they
'Cause we could work through that one, I just, this one we worked through already. And the language parallels what's in thirty-five forty-five. I think what needs to happen is it needs to be, I guess we need to have some understanding why we have both of them. And maybe that needs to come from legal, I don't know if we're required to have this in community and
I'll tell you right now.
'Cause I think the one in student is significant. But even the titles are 'Cause this is student interviews, interrogations, which it's not supposed to be interrogations, it's supposed to be investigations.
Right.
Or interviews. But, I mean, we could just step away from that for this one, so we get a little bit better footing, and go into the use of animals in education programs.
And then just, you know, I mean, I could, do you want me to reach out to ISBA, do you want me to reach out to Megan and ask that question? Do we have to have two, or can we have them?
I would reach out to Megan, not ISBA.
Specific to thirty-five forty-five and forty-four-ten, right?
Correct, and it may be that we're, well, don't reach out yet, because I think we need to change, we need to update the language in thirty-five forty-five. And then we need to send her both policies, and say, do you understand why we would want to carry both policies?
Okay.
In two different subcategories, or categories.
And, like I said, the admin feedback is pretty minimal, so that policy's pretty much done, but you can, I'll send you the draft of what they put in, we can
Okay.
Go from there.
Perfect.
Nice question.
Yeah?
Was thirty-five forty-five already reviewed, and so, so this is just secondary to what's already been reviewed in that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thirty-five forty-five went out for parent input, and it came back. And then, we've sent out the next one, which was thirty-five fifty, and there was confusion, so then we tried to clear that up.
That one was releasing of students during the school day, and people saw it as the same as the
Well, it was removing, so they, they took, because that was such a heavy word, it's like, no, that's not what it's about.
We changed it to releasing.
Yeah.
I have a question too.
Yeah.
Is there a kind of a clarification for what the sentence shall make an effort to notify students' parents is in thirty-five forty-five, if you guys have already gone over that, or Like, is there like a step to follow, or?
Yeah, we added into it
The draft.
Verbage about if parents aren't able to come in person, having them available, like, on speakerphone.
Okay.
Or if they wanted to.
But like, the first point of contact is just, is calling the parent, correct?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And you try to get them to come in, but sometimes, you know, people work out town or whatever, and so
Yeah, or some, I mean, sometimes you just know when he answers.
Yeah.
By the time we get to middle school, they're not answering as quick.
Yes, yes.
But, yeah, every effort is me.
But there was verbiage added, and
Okay.
About that.
Yeah, on the bottom of page two, we added, if parents are unable to be physically present, present, efforts will be made to accommodate parents' presence via telephone or electronic means.
Okay.
Okay, so
Telephone call prior to
Do we wanna specify what those efforts are? Specify email or phone, or text, or something like that?
Okay, let me read the
'Cause I assume smoke signals would not qualify.
True. Before any student interview or interrogation, which, there's that interrogation again.
I just, I feel like where it says via telephone or electronic, that's the
And it doesn't say that there?
Yeah, that is the effort. It's just on the latter, it's on the back end of the sentence.
And you kind of got your order of contact in Skyward, that they'll pull up, that, so it would follow, presumably, and my assumption would be that it would follow whatever your Skyward contacts are
Right.
In their
Where we have to be careful, though, is if it was a Skyward contact and you couldn't get ahold of, like, Mom or Dad, we wouldn't, like, then call an emergency contact and let them have access to any of this. We might call the emergency contact and say, you know, can you, we're trying to get ahold of so-and-so, if you, can you let them know that we're trying to get ahold of them, but we wouldn't disclose anything to that, to emergency contact, so it would literally just be that family. And it would only be if there was any kind of custodial, it would, you know, then it gets
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I get what's, what needs saying, because if parents aren't able to be physically present, efforts will be made to accommodate parents' presence via telephonic or electronic means. Maybe this sentence needs to be reworded in the sense that if parents aren't able to be physically present, if a parent's able to be on the telephone, or over Zoom, Skype, whatever, that is going to be accommodated.
That's the effort, yeah.
Yeah, that is the effort.
And really, in the legalese, I mean, we probably have to say custodian versus parents, 'cause we've got, you know, students that
True.
Parents don't have to have custodial.
Right.
Alright.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was actually looking at the
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, yeah, 'cause this is
Forty-four-ten dog, thirty-four forty-five.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Is there anything in there about if a parent isn't contacted prior to an interview? Like, if there's a consequence to that, or?
If they didn't, if they couldn't get ahold of the parent, or if they didn't bother to try? Well, they have to try.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's always the follow-up question, if, you know, if you didn't, I mean, I don't, I can't think of a time that that's ever happened, but you know, that's a question I'd ask, like, were you able to give us a go? Oh, it did?
Yeah. I got a call afterwards, which wasn't a big deal, he was a witness to something, so
Oh.
That was kind of a alarming phone call to get
Yeah.
After the fact, but I didn't see any missed calls and I didn't have any emails, so that's kind of why I was wondering if there's something on there that states like what the actual protocol is to doing it, so that I, parents would know.
Is that in the employee handbook?
Well, I mean, they're following policy, so it would be the policy.
The policy is not protocol.
Yeah, I don't think that we have a, I mean, I, what would, I'd have to know the scenario.
Right.
'Cause if it was just the adult, like, the principal talking to the kid about a witness, like, they wouldn't necessarily, but if the kid was, at some point, you should have been involved.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're being recorded, so I just
No, yeah, I wasn't about to share.
Yeah.
That was just one of the questions I had, 'cause I did also receive these in the email that you sent out to parents, and I think I may have emailed that to whoever is on the other end of that Google sheet, but never heard anything back, so I don't know, can't see what was going on.
Yeah.
Right.
But, I think that if there's like a notification, and it's spelled out, like you said, makes an effort to notify, then
Yeah.
Yeah, it could have just been an oversight of that day. Wasn't anything that was like too worrisome for me, but as a parent, I would have liked to have been notified beforehand, for him having an officer in with him and the principal.
That's the kind of thing where, like, as a parent, I would appreciate probably all means of communication, like, phone call, text, email.
I do get a lot of those.
Right, I do get a lot, but in that, you know, in this case, probably want all of them.
Well, if we changed, 'cause it does state, "An effort shall be made," which implies we're only gonna make one attempt.
All effort.
Right.
If we change it to "all effort," or "efforts," 'cause there should be multiple. "All efforts shall be made to notify the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian in advance of the interview or interrogation regarding suspected criminal activity, unless safety issues are involved."
So, maybe it fell under the "unless safety issues are involved," because it did have a safety aspect of it that they were trying to figure out something quickly, so maybe that is where that fell under that verbiage, which I didn't know, so it makes sense, if somebody's in danger, I might wanna be the person who's like, oh, wait until we get ahold of this person to move forward, so
Well, as an, as administration, though, do you see any problem with just making it clear in the policy that we're gonna do everything we possibly can to try and reach you? Doesn't necessarily mean that that is gonna happen, but we're going to do any, all, every effort we can.
I think that seems fine, and this might be that I just don't know enough about Skylark. But I don't know that we, unless I texted you from like my personal phone, I don't know how I could send a text. But I, like, calling the, the two listed guardians, if there are two, and then sending an email, I think
I did text from the
You concern the texts from Skyward.
Yeah, so, that's, I'm, I'm not, I'm principal assistant, so I'm not that fancy. I've done it a couple times.
You guys probably don't have the ability to do a, it would have to be only the principal can do a text.
So, like, if it was a day that I'm in office, I would have a hard time doing that, and that is kind of, I've gone through
You'd only, you'd only be able to do it on your personal phone, because you guys don't all have access to Skylark.
Yeah.
And it's, it's
That would slow things down.
Tremendously, because it's cumbersome.
'Cause, I mean, sometimes it just feels like stuff happens with like ten minutes left of the day, you know, so you're trying to track through stuff. So, the texting part, I think, could be tricky, is only
Jimmy could, because he could do it via, you know, but
Right, and could, but 'Cause they're not the ones, and obviously, you know, they're not always the ones that are involved in those things.
Right. But, phone call and email would be super easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So, do you think that helps?
It does help, the language in this form, 'cause like I said, I was, I was looking at this one and I didn't see that out there, like
You were looking at forty-four-ten?
Okay.
I guess it is right here, it says "unless safety issues are involved," so that does make sense. That could have been seen as definitely a safety issue for other students at the school that day, so, yeah.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
Was our local law enforcement, were they part of this conversation, and my, my only question on that? Do we have any instruction for administrators on what happens in that interim? So, we've got a kiddo, we know that they need to be interviewed by police, and, you know, the language then kind of talks about even if parents can't be there, that the, you know, the principal or, you know, administrator of some sort is in loco parentis. So, in that interim, do we have some policy or instruction from local law enforcement that talks about not kind of having your own interview, or, you know?
Well, it would be the job of the principal, you're in charge of the building, so they have to be in a designated spot, and they don't have access to the kids until you give them access.
I understand that, so my question is, though, is there instruction or recommendation for the principal or administrator in not having their own interview with the student? So, okay, we're waiting for parental contact, because law enforcement wants to interview the student, we've got thirty minutes until that can happen. Is there instruction or procedure on, you know, maybe not having a whole nother interview with that student prior to law enforcement's interview? Or, how does, is that necessary to have some type of?
Well, legal would say that we have an obligation, so like, let's just say an incident happened at school, and we have an obligation to do our own investigation, because there's been situations where this was the example that we got from the attorney, is they just passed it on to law enforcement, so law enforcement did their deal, they took it to the prosecutor's attorney, the case was dropped, there was punitive action taken at the school, but then there was zero documentation, because it was all, and so, then, they, there was file, I mean, there was lawsuits and everything, because the school didn't do their due diligence, and so, they have said, you independently, even if it's a crime and law enforcement's getting you still have to do your due diligence at the school to follow your own policies and procedures, so
Is that necessary to specify, just so that there's
If they know, they know those pieces that they have to do that, and, I mean, it could be that they're doing that before law enforcement, because that, I mean, once law enforcement, they're present, but they can't control if file charges are, like, any of that piece, so they have to do their reporting, and they have to do their investigation or interviews, and do their due diligence to make sure that they're getting a, you know, a sense of the story, and then following Policy thirty-three thirty around student discipline, so
Okay.
They have
But you guys have those pieces kind of laid out of what
And she gave us, very top of page two of thirty-five forty-five says, it's where we, and we read this today with our admin team, "School discipline investigation conducted by school administrators and criminal investigator," it just talks about being done in parallel.
Okay.
And it addresses the fact that, I guess, they're gonna do their job, but our job also includes the discipline piece, and they need to be happening in tandem. And/or the support piece, and/or whatever that looks like, but, 'cause we have zero control over what happens on there, and from the legal standpoint, I mean, we have, we are, we can't recommend charges, not, you know, we don't have any say-so, and that has to go to the attorney, so so they, but they have their own responsibility as far as the follow-through, and the due process for both, for all the students involved.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so, because we do need to bring that language that legal wants in the policy, we'll bring that in. Let's go to the happier place of the use of animals in education programs. I think I pulled that up, did I? I did. Alright, so, I believe Yeah, we've never had this policy.
Right.
Which is interesting.
Will you go back up to your March, though?
We wrote this policy last year, did we not?
We did, but we never
Fairly extensively.
Yeah, we never got fully through it, and the reason this got brought to the table is because we were working on the therapy dog program. And so, then it was like, well, we don't even have a policy about animals in school.
If you wanna have a hamster.
In your classroom, yeah.
We have animals in our classroom, my fourth grader.
And I'm not against it or anything, but
I think they went I think they went through all of the things you have listed, 'cause I got a notification that there was an animal in my classroom for my son, and that he could be in a different class if he, if I didn't want him there.
We got to bring the iguana home, that was
Oh, I say no.
That March fourteenth, just on the very top, I just wanna show you.
Okay.
So, you asked for the, that example, so right, go up a little bit, right there.
Okay.
So, that is, I think it's Cordelaine's draft, or maybe it was a draft from Boise, but there was another draft, I don't remember who brought this draft, but, that we wanted to look at, so
On this one?
Yeah, this was the, somebody brought this example.
Okay.
And so, way back when, we wanted to look at it, but didn't wanna, it's here.
Okay.
I feel like we did a lot of work, but there is, there's another example to reference.
Okay, so
I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you. Let's, 'cause there's dissection, and then
There's procedure.
Procedure, okay, so Parent family engagement, that might be friendlier, let's just, on a simple mode. Okay, well, let's just start, go from the top to the bottom, and we'll see where we're at. "The use of animals in educational programs, animals may be brought into the school setting for educational purposes only in accordance with the policies of the district, and the procedures established by the superintendent and or building principal with regard to the presence of animals." Okay, so, I think maybe this should be the superintendent and building principal, I don't think it should be and/or.
I agree.
So
I feel like the principal should have some say-so.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question, just, when you say "school setting," that means like during the school class time, so this does not include before or after school?
It would be my understanding that this would be within the school building.
Like inside?
Mm-hmm.
So, not playground, grass area?
You're talking about after hours?
I'm just thinking, we have quite a few parents who come with animals, and even though it's not really
Oh.
Something that you're not supposed to do.
I think they're supposed to
After hours, not during school.
Not during school hours, but once the bell rings.
A lot of the schools, their people will walk their dogs, and the issue is, is that then stuff happens while they're walking their dogs, and they don't always pick it up, and so our custodians have to go out, so
That should be the custodian's job.
Well, I mean, anybody that's there in the morning, we're going out and trying to peruse to pick up and do, 'cause it happens all the time. So, at probably every school.
I thought we had rules that, like, no dogs on school grounds.
And who have postings on fences.
But if it's seven o'clock at night, it happens all the time, and I would say at probably every school.
Don't we have cameras?
I mean
Do we have signs?
We do.
Some schools, I don't know that all of them have signs, but, yeah.
What, aren't, aren't our grounds lockable, like, to keep people off?
They've got six-foot fences there.
Public, like, the high school track is open for the public.
That's true.
Come and bring their dogs to run. And there's part of that, but I would love to take, I, I live in the area, and I take my dogs to a park, but same time, if I lived here, it was convenient, but I also would clean up after my dog.
Yeah.
Right.
You would never know But, if you, if you take that to the next level, we have people that come on campus, and then there's various things that have been left on campus, and that we definitely don't want little people finding. So, I don't really wanna say what that is publicly, but you can just understand, from a gross level to, you know, more gross level, I guess.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, is this just for the circumstances within the building, within school time?
For right now, yes.
Okay.
That is what this specific policy is for.
That outside would be really hard, I don't know how
I don't either.
To manage that, 'cause
I just didn't know if it was also translating over into that as well, or not.
Oh, maybe it's just a flag, I'm seeing a shadow, and I'm like, oh, is that a person? Okay. Alright, so this policy does not apply to service animals. Students, guests, and/or employees may use service animals that are handled in accordance with applicable state laws, federal laws, and district policy, or, and policy twenty-three seventy-five. Likewise, police and SRO K nine use is handled in accordance with applicable school search policies and state regulation.
That's our search and seizure policy.
Okay. "To protect students and staff, the following animals brought onto the school facilities for educational" The following, oh, applies to animals brought So
That's an interesting sentence.
There we go. So, "the following applies to animals brought onto the school facilities." Alright, this is driving me nuts, alright, the district superintendent
You eliminated the word "the," "the following applies to animals brought into school facilities?"
Period.
Well, I didn't read the word "the," that comes before "school facilities."
Oh.
Or for the use of educational purposes.
"Brought into school facilities for educational purposes, the district superintendent" Superintendent and "Building principal may place additional guidelines or restrictions upon the presence of specific animals in the school setting. Furthermore, the presence of any animal, whether regularly or periodically housed in a classroom, or brought into the school for an isolated or singular visit, requires timely preapproval from the building principal." Okay. So, what is the purpose of this sentence? Is it at the top?
I'm not sure.
So, let's keep streaking, keep streaking.
See, let's see what I keep doing there, alright.
Superintendent, "The building principal may place additional guidelines or should consider the presence of special animals in the school setting, further the presence of any animal." Requires timely preapproval from, timely is super subjective.
Okay.
I mean, I, doesn't matter to me, but it is subjective.
It is. So, 'cause what's timely to me might not be timely to you, oopsies, I do that every time. I will never get used to Google.
It's subjective, and what does it mean there, if it's preapproval, preapproval?
It means that you can't just show up the day
Right, exactly, but it means timely, it is preapproval. You know, I feel like timely is something that would apply to something that is required after the fact.
So, is it forty-eight hours, is it five days?
Right.
A week, yeah. Yeah. Or is it just requires it preapproval?
Yeah.
I think it's just preapproval, yeah.
How about, "requires" "require approval prior to bringing" "any animal" "onto school." Grounds.
Approval from the building principal prior to bringing any animal on the school grounds?
Yeah, I think that's better.
Okay, so "requires approval from the building principal." Okay.
You wanna read that period over?
No. It's reaching. There might be more words, we don't know. "The presence of any animal" "requires approval from the building principal prior to bringing any animal onto school." Okay. Animals regularly or periodically housed in classrooms. No animal
That's the same sentence.
No animal shall be housed in any school classroom without preapproval from the building principal. Okay, this is redundant. "A classroom teacher seeking to house, house an animal in the classroom shall submit such a request in writing explaining the educational purpose of having an animal in a classroom setting. A separate form must be provided for each animal to be housed in a classroom. All information sought on the form must be complete, completed fully and accurately." All information sought on the form must be complete, completed fully and accurately, who's judging the accuracy? Uh, to the best of the employee's knowledge. The teacher signing the request application is responsible for assuming primary responsibility for the animal, and shall be designated as the animal's supervising teacher. This is great, alright. Prior to exposing any student to live animals in the classroom, the supervising teacher shall provide a written notification to all parents, including a copy of form, twenty-five eighty F, student permission form for exposure to animals, to obtain parental guardian consent.
A live animal versus dead animals, and we have the next volume.
I'm gonna do tax under me classes. I mean, my kid has brought stuffed bobcat and all that stuff for showing talent, so I mean, like, I mean, it.
No, I know.
You know.
Copies of all such completed student permission forms shall be maintained in the classroom by the supervising teacher, with a copy provided to and maintained by building administration. Do we do that?
No, I would imagine we have one set, and then that's it.
Isn't it usually in Skywardful?
Yeah, now.
Okay.
Unless we had, we didn't have a digital, they have to upload it, so, I mean, sometimes they'll just have a binder with all the signed permission slips, because.
Okay.
And then they don't always, you guys don't always upload that stuff in Skyward, do you?
Okay. So the supervising teacher shall consult with any parent guardian with regard to students who are immunocompromised, or have allergies, asthma, or other health concerns relating to contact or proximity of animals.
And I would say it would never be the teacher, it would be the nurse. Were you to agree? Or I feel like the nurse would call, I mean, how's the teacher gonna read the level of asthma, or, you know what I mean?
Wouldn't that fall under the permission form for exposure to animal, though?
Mm-hmm. But if you, as a parent, got this note, and you, whatever the permissions will look like, and there was a concern, then I would think that the nurse would be the one that follows up specific to that, so that you and the nurse can talk about what that would look like, if you were comfortable with it, but wanted some accommodations, you know?
Yeah. Maybe in addition of teacher and or school nurse.
Alright, well, I'm getting overwhelmed by this policy, so let's just go back up to the first paragraph, because it's the one that's like. So, should, okay, so, a teacher seeking to house an animal in any classroom shall submit a request in writing explaining the educational purposes of having an animal in the classroom setting. Does that work?
Yep.
Seeking to house an animal in a, in. Any classroom shall submit a request in writing explaining the educational purpose of having an animal. Lots of those. Shall submit a request in writing explaining the educational purpose of having the animal in the classroom setting. A separate form must be provided for each animal to be housed in a classroom, um.
I don't think so, we feel like you need the last two things. Oh, or.
Well, I mean.
You have to have one or the other, we don't need both.
All information sought on such form must be completed fully and accurately. Well, yeah, of course, do we have to tell people that, I mean? I think those last two sentences should be obsolete.
I agree.
Under point eight.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. There's no fixing anything, okay, the teacher signing this request, uh. The request application is responsible for assuming primary responsibility for the animal. That's stupid, that's stupid. I mean, seriously.
I have twenty-four first graders in my turtle.
You are supervising all of them.
Yes.
Prior to exposing any student to a live animal in the classroom. The teacher, um, shall provide written notification to all. Parents. To all what?
Guardians.
Guardians.
Yeah, that's, because we need to add that as well. Include a copy of form twenty-five eighty F. I think we need to say something to the effect of, if the consent forms don't come back, you can't bring the animal into the classroom.
Sorry.
Yep.
What does that do for longstanding classroom animals?
We need to still get consent, I mean, I don't.
Right, but if, if one student in that was assigned to that classroom's parent does not wanna have their student involved with an animal, can we really ask them to take the animal out of the classroom that it's been in for however many years? Or would there be an alternative as finding a different classroom for the student, or?
Hmm, I don't know, I would, I mean, me personally, I would think, if it's been longstanding, and the parent's been exposed and already knows, then that conversation should have happened already.
I mean, I just mean, like, if, um, you know, third grader coming into fourth grade, like, it's well known that we have a set of animals in a classroom at John Brown.
Okay.
So if a parent did not wanna have their student in that, and didn't wanna sign the form, but didn't want to miss out on having that teacher, I mean, how would that work?
I don't know.
I think at the end of the day, the education has to come first, eh, eh, you know, in my mind, like, like, you know, the animal's fun, and, you know, everybody maybe enjoys that, but at the end of the day, you know, it's school. I'm not saying I like it, but I mean.
I get that, you know.
Absolutely, right.
I mean, I feel like in your scenario that you gave, if you have, you're moving into fourth grade, and there's four, you know, let's just say there are three fourth grade teachers. Um, my hope would be that, there would be that conversation prior to, so everybody knows, and then if you had a concern, then you were just, the kid would be placed in a different class. Cuz you also wouldn't want that to be a situation where now you're ostracizing this child, because.
Right.
You know, they have asthma, and they just have, so I think, you know, but I don't think, I agree, the parents have to, that we just have too many allergies now, and issues that, we have to take that into consideration, it just can't be a given that if you want to have an animal, it's allowed, it just.
And those things.
It's like peanut butter anymore, you just, I mean, we have to do our due diligence.
But those things can develop halfway into the school year too, and then you don't wanna have to remove the student, give him to a new teacher, I mean, you know, so at some point, you know.
It's not gonna disrupt that child's learning environment, yeah.
But we also don't ban peanuts in classrooms?
We do in some schools, like, like, and when I was a principal, we had significant allergy at every single grade in multiple classrooms, and so we did say that we're asking that to not be a snack, and parents honored it because.
Which, yeah.
Because we had to, I mean, it was severe enough, and we had had enough kids that it was, and some of them were airborne, so.
And there are peanut free classrooms, like, my son was in.
Right, but that's, kinda goes to the, the thing, you know, if you have a peanut free classroom, you can have an animal free classroom as well.
Right.
So maybe that would be a concession made, I don't know.
I would think that, I mean, if, if there's one parent that's like, no, don't want it, keep it away from my kiddo, if that can be managed in that classroom, then I would think the child would be moved. But if there is absolutely no way to move that child, then the animal wouldn't be allowed in the classroom.
That does make sense.
I think you have to work with everyone on that scenario.
Yeah, and I would hope, which, I mean, I'm, I know that some people are pretty obstinate, so, I would hope that there could become a working relationship that would resolve the problem, or situations.
Also, in this case, you could send out a survey to parents that are, of children that are going into that grade.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would think the solution would be, is it would be something that you'd send out, and then that would develop in class list, that would be taken into consideration.
Should be.
Cuz I, I'd be hard pressed as a parent to my, to your point, Lacey, if the, I've been in the class, and it's March, or it's April, and now all of a sudden, I'm getting, I'm having allergies, and something's happened.
Right.
And then you find out, and it's like, I have, I've been, this is my community, I built all of this with my classroom, and now all of a sudden, the last month, I have to be, you know, I, I feel like that kid would be more important, in my opinion.
Oh, and I would think, teachers should put the child as the important priority, not the, the animal, which, I know some of the little people might get their feelings. It might be sad for them to see, you know, the hamster go away, or whatever animal it is, um, the iguana.
It could be shortened, I mean, then when that, you know, but I, it is, there's maybe circumstances where I think we just have to try to do in the best interest of all parties involved.
Oh, absolutely. Um, I'm not sure what the purpose of.
So, so consult with any parent.
So the teacher shall consult with any parent.
I don't think you need be if you're gonna require consent.
Well, cuz what I'm trying to figure out is what are they consulting with, because if a parent doesn't consent.
Right.
You can't go persuade the parent to say your child's allergies are not.
Maybe it could, could it be, it's just a, I'm okay with it, but my kiddo isn't gonna be allowed to hold it, like, they, fine, they can look at it, they have a dander allergy, they don't get to touch. You know, so it could be part of that, what that consent form looks like, that says.
Are there any considerations or accommodations that may be needed, something to that effect, right?
Like, they shouldn't be changing the.
Bedding.
Bedding while the students in the room has to be done before, if it's a job the kids are having, that's part of that, that there may be some of those types of things that you have to consider that would still allow my child to be in the room.
Right.
As a student.
Okay.
And sign the consent, but these would be the things that.
And that could be part of the form.
The conditions, yeah.
And that would be part of why B would be.
Right, with it.
Would that be part of form twenty-five eighty F?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think would just be, cuz I'd want it that written down, yeah.
But with what Shannon's saying, this paragraph is requiring the teacher to have that conversation, even if the teacher, I mean, even if the parent writes it down, so. What I was, what it says, any parent or guardian with regard to students who are immunocompromised or have allergies, like, I, you may have several kids that have allergies or asthma, but their parents have no concern, cuz it's not related to the snake that's in the room. Right, right. Because they're not allowed.
Let's not do a snake.
I'm just thinking of something that B would be less about.
Oh, Shannon.
So I've been there as a parent, and my little girl, um, one of my twins had a significant immune issue. Um, and so it was like, you know, somebody was, you know, bringing baby chicks to show, and I was like, oh, great, but she can't touch them. You know, and, and so it was just, but it was just that.
Simple as that, yeah.
Exactly, so I think, I think those conversations, you can write it on a form, but I do think the follow-up verbal conversation, making sure that, okay, we're on the same page, we understand what this looks like versus just, you know, filling out a form, I do think that, that, that conversation is, is necessary.
Can we just take out all the qualifiers and just leave it as have health concerns, shall consult with any parent guardian?
Well, I was just thinking, something to the effect of going back to the form, like, if considerations are noted on the form, teacher will do.
Move your car, follow.
Something like that, specific to what's noted in that, because if they don't note it, then it's probably not a relative, it's not, it doesn't relate, you know what I mean?
Or they might have a concern that's not related to health.
Yeah, but, but that's why we put that on that form, like, other considerations, we don't have to designate or delineate that it's health.
Yeah.
We could just say, other considerations, or, you know.
Little man has relocated the snake.
Form twenty-five eighty.
No tarantulas.
If you look at twenty-five eighty F, that takes care of some of your concerns, cuz it says right in the form, that they will not take cases or handle animal waste, it also says that this animal is or not allowed, so, we're not.
I didn't realize that.
Constricting seems a lot.
I don't even like to go into that.
Michelle said I wouldn't be in that classroom, you'd just keep me out.
No, thank you.
Perfect, I think. There we go, and I think over here. Completed.
Summer school.
Yes. Teacher has been granted permission to have any animal in the classroom. Shall provide formal classroom instruction to students regarding sanitation. Okay. Maybe it should be a protocol for our teacher, I don't know, the supervising is driving me nuts, um. The teacher. Shall provide formal classroom instructions. What do we mean by formal? Can it just be classroom instruction?
I would say something about written, I think there's a protocol.
Okay.
I mean, little people need to, they probably need to have it posted.
I think ours is posted.
Written classroom instruction to students regarding sanitation and the handling of animals, and shall require all individuals handling animals to subsequently wash it or hands thoroughly with soap and water. Should be a given.
That should be part of protocol.
Our form is above the sink in our classroom, so.
I just think that's kind of, okay. Stating the obvious, but it's just.
Well, I don't think you have to put the washing your hands, I, I think that it will be part of the protocol, so you could say, the teacher shall provide written classroom instruction to students regarding sanitation in the handling of animals, and that's it.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I think you could be done with the rest of it, cuz that's gonna be part of the protocol. Otherwise, you need to list everything you're going to.
Alright.
Don't put it in your backpack, don't take it home.
Don't put it in your pocket, don't eat it.
You don't need to lick it.
Any student handling any animal must be directly supervised by the supervising teacher. Supervising, supervising, supervising. Must be supervised by the teacher, only the, my gosh, I don't like this. Only the, my gosh, I don't like this policy.
There's not anymore.
Only the teacher or student designated by the.
Can't you just say something to, um.
Permission as detailed herein.
Teacher.
Is there a search and replace function in Google Docs?
Yes. Well, there's a control find, I would assume. See, control F, I think, and then I think we can.
Technically.
Yeah, is there?
Okay, find supervising and replace it with nothing.
Supervising with a strike through?
Yeah, can you do that?
I don't.
Does it allow you to format a strike through, controls, what's the search?
It's for alt.
Control break something, I don't know. It's probably different in Google than Microsoft.
It won't, I mean, cause it's alt shift five and it won't.
It won't do it, huh?
No, wait, I wonder.
That would've been really impressive to me.
Would've been to me too.
Parentheses with an X in it or something, just, just so you have like the, like, we're just putting nothing there. That way, I don't know.
Wait, you have ignored diacritics tag checked, what if you uncheck ignored, oh no, I don't think that'll do, no, that's fine.
Try control D, I'm gonna give you a holdup to try, cause I just.
I don't wanna see, can I move this, I can.
If you can adjust.
Don't copy it based on.
If I can copy it. It's annoying.
Why Google, why?
Cause Google. I'll just continue to be annoyed.